I'm in Peso. Yeah, donde va?
Good evening. How's everybody doing? Welcome to the city of West Miami. Today is August 19th.
Twenty.
Huh?
August 20.
Twenty, I'm sorry. I'm reading the agenda. And I should not do that. Should read the calendar. So today's Wednesday, August 20, 2014, at 7:40. For the invocation, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you. Please rise. And let's bow our head and thank the Lord for the many blessings that we receive each and every day. We thank the Lord for this meeting. We thank the Lord for West Miami. However, tonight, we pray for peace in our country, and we pray for our nations, for all races, all creeds, to come together with a sense of understanding and respect towards each other so that justice can also always prevail. We pray for our servicemen and women, and all our public servants. Our prayers and thoughts go to the families of the two journalists who have placed themselves in harm's way for the sake of doing their job and living their dream. We ask for a moment of silence tonight to honor the life of James Foley, the United States journalist who was beheaded by the Islamic State militants. And we ask for peace worldwide. A moment of silence. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Captain, for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Eduardo Mulina.
Present.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Candy Dablanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Roger Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Item four, presentation of the minutes.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for July 15th, 2014 Charter Review Board Meeting, July 16th, 2014 Regular City Commission Meeting, and August 1st, 2014 Special City Commission Meetings.
Mayor.
For the July 15th, are we gonna do, you're gonna do it by meeting?
What's everybody present in all the meetings?
In fact, yes. All were present of the three meetings.
Okay. Let's do it by meeting, so that way it's clear.
July 15th, 2014 Charter Review Board Meeting.
Any comments?
No.
Okay.
I was reading the minutes, and I didn't find any discrepancy. Everything is in order.
Okay, is that a motion?
Motion.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
Okay. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
July 16th. Any comments on July 16th minutes?
No, I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Need a second. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. Motion. August 1st. The special City Commission Meeting. Any comments on that?
I make a motion.
Okay. Okay, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item, item five.
Item five, report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission. I have a written report that was issued late this afternoon, and a supplemental item which should be construed as part of my report, which is attached to the agenda packet. The first item in my report includes an item, notification received by the mayor from Miami-Dade County Office of Property Appraiser, advising us that they would be in our area conducting re-inspections of all properties located within our municipal boundaries in an effort to ensure fair and equitable assessments for all property owners. This process commenced this week, and a copy of the letter has been attached to your packet or to your report in case you get any calls from any of your constituents that you're able to advise them that that's the county, and they're in here conducting assessments. They have a marked vehicle, and they are touring the city with county staff and equipment that they use to perform this work.
What sort of question? What sort of inspection they perform?
They are actually performing inspections from the street view. They have special cameras. And basically, what they're looking is for people to make sure that the tax rolls are consistent with the way the property sits. And basically, you know, the lack of that type of supervision allows for work to be done without proper and valid building permits.
My question goes out, they're not gonna go inside of the property, are they?
Not to our knowledge. There is a letter that was received by the Office of the Mayor, and they're advising us that their equipment or their van will be equipped with digital cameras that will capture street-level images of individual properties, as well as take inventory of improved parcels throughout Miami-Dade County. So this is not only something they're doing here, they're going out to all areas in Miami-Dade County. And they're basically using this data to validate property value and assessments and parcel information. And it's like a re-inspection process that they're going through now. Okay? But they, to our knowledge, they are not, they're asking, basically, they're informing the mayor that they are moving through the streets in the community, and they want to ensure that emergency personnel, such as police and fire, are aware of their presence.
Okay.
The next item is briefly touch upon grant writing. We are working with EcoStrata Services in an effort to pursue quality-of-life grants and projects for the city. Your agenda this evening addresses the renewal of the contract, and it identifies a possible grant. The next item is the 2014-2015 tentative budget. We are finalizing the tentative numbers so that we can stay as close to real revenues and real expenses for next year. We have set some meeting dates and times aside so that we can meet individually with the mayor and city commissioners before the submittal of the tentative budget. The Office of Property Appraiser will be sending the notice of proposed taxes sometime this week to property owners. I wouldn't be surprised if they came in the mail probably tomorrow and Friday. The next item in my report deals with the election cost for the November 2014 election, where the city has authorized certain questions to appear on the ballot. The city clerk has received an estimate after her inquiry to the Department of Elections of the anticipated expenses in connection with our questions on the ballot. And they have given her an estimate of $5,200, which we have attached to this report. In addition to the $5,200, we're looking at about $2,500 for expenses associated with legal advertisement that takes place the fifth week and the third week prior to that election. Those are legal ads that have to appear in a newspaper of general circulation. So our original projection of $7,500 is a real project, is a real number, and I think we forecasted the correct expense, and that will be reflected in your budget as well. The next item is Labor Day, September 1st, 2014, Monday. The city of West Miami will close in observance of Labor Day on September 1st. There will be police and garbage collection. All other city departments will close in observance of Labor Day. The next item is our PVA negotiations. The city continues to negotiate with Miami-Dade County Police Benevolent Association so that we can bring negotiations to a successful completion and action or ratification by the mayor and city commission soon. Our next bargaining session meeting is scheduled for tomorrow. The next item on the report is street sweeping. Street sweeping citywide will take place on August 21st, which is tomorrow, between the hours, Mr. Penn, I think it's 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. sometime. We have noticed all the homes on the west side of the city regarding the scheduled street sweeping to take place tomorrow. The reason for the notification is we find that the street sweeper does obviously a better job where the streets look cleaner on the east side of the city because of the composition of the actual road. And the street sweeper, although it goes to the west side of the city, when cars or vehicles are parked along the curb, they are unable to pick up the leaves and unable to target those areas where we have French drains in the community that, so that we can free them from leaves. And what our attempt or our goal here is to make the city look clean and beautiful in the east side as well as the west side. So neighbors have been asked to please move their vehicles tomorrow. This is the first time we've provided this type of notice. I hope they adhere to it so that their side of the street can look as nice as the other side of the street, and so that we don't spend efforts or money unwisely. So this effort will take place tomorrow, and the information is up on the city website as well. One additional item is the issue of, and this is a part of my report, which is attached to your agenda packet. At a recent meeting involving Mayor Mulina, Dr. Martha Perez, a Dade County School Board member, and my office, we had the mayor engage Dr. Perez in a conversation on the possibility of the school board opening the door to funding the classes at the West Miami Community Center. Since then, we've had several meetings with school board representatives at all level, from the superintendent's office down to the actual community, adult education, community school principal from Fairlon Elementary. And this is a program that was funded years ago by the Miami-Dade County Public School Systems, but with a bad economy, all those funds basically dwindled down, and they stopped picking up the tab for our teachers next door at the center. So the goal is to be able to alleviate some of the expenses in future years for the community center by establishing or re-establishing a partnership with Miami-Dade County Public Schools. And they have, as of the writing of this memorandum, they have actually agreed to fund one class, which is the knitting class. It's a very, very well-attended, very lively class. They have actually taken the teacher, and they are screening her for their prerequisites so that they can pay her hourly wage. And although it is not gonna be a meaningful item for our budgetary purposes, it opens the door to Miami-Dade County Public Schools possibly funding other classes next year. So it's a little drop in the bucket, but I look at it as sort of, it's gonna alleviate us staying within our budget parameters, but it's also gonna open up the door for other partnerships with the school board for our seniors.
Seed money.
I'm sorry?
Seed.
Seed money. Seed money, I stand corrected, thank you. That concludes my report, and if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to respond to those.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager?
No.
Okay.
By the way, we did, Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Following that conversation, I did take the opportunity to have a conversation with Commissioner Luciano Suarez, who chairs the community center activities. And obviously, he's been briefed, and I believe that he may have come by the city when we were meeting with the individuals. So he's been briefed about the progress of our meetings with the school board.
Okay.
As a courtesy, thank you.
Any advice before we go any further? Taking any items out of order in the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, we met, we had a pre-meeting before this meeting, and we talked about some items that are, we're gonna request that they be deferred this evening. So I would suggest to you that we follow the order of the agenda.
Okay. So next item will be item six.
Item six is the report of the city attorney.
There's no report by the city attorney. Okay. Next item.
Item seven, report of the city engineers, none this evening. Under item eight, committee reports, report of the mayor.
No report by the mayor. Next item.
Item nine, citizen presentations. No presentations, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Next item, 10A.
Item 10, under unfinished business, item 10A, B, and C. It is requested to be deferred, postponed until further notice.
Okay. Mr. Attorney, anything that we need to do? Some of them are requests. No, let's see.
Motion to defer.
Need a motion.
Just a motion, okay.
To defer.
So I need a motion to defer item 10A, B, and C.
Motion.
Okay, need a second. Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Suarez. Commissioner Suarez.
I am reading the A, B, and C. Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes.
Yes.
Mayor Mulina.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
New business agenda items, item 11, item 11A. This is a request for mitigation of code enforcement liens for code violations at the property located at 6279 Southwest 14th Street, West Miami, Florida, and owner Angela Baquedano.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Angela Baquedano and Harold Caicedo, 6279 Southwest 14th Street, West Miami.
Thank you.
I just recently applied for a low modification.
Bring the mic a little bit down, please.
I recently applied for a low modification on my house, and I was approved, and then, three weeks later, I was called, and I was told I was disapproved because I had a lien on my house that had been placed by the city of West Miami. And so I am here to, I was completely uninformed. I said, what? I called, I mean, I was like crazy when I called here. And I'm here to find, I was completely, it was since 2012, and it's something about the easement property because Nettie's was kind enough to make copies of everything for me, and the easement that I had overgrown. Supposedly, you guys had a meeting. I was uninformed, I don't know. It says that I was sent letters, but honestly, I have no recollection of any of it. I was completely in awe when it showed up. So I'm here to ask for, I don't know what you guys do about this, how I could get this renewed, because I would like to reapply for my low modification at this time. It'd be really important for me. And I need to have like 60 to 90 days to do it. So as soon as we can get this taken care of, and if you guys could do something about lowering, I don't know, but fine, putting out the original fine, or you had to do something with the overgrown easement.
Okay, thank you. I would like to hear from Mr. Penna.
Mister. Oh.
Unless you have something else.
I didn't know who was coming, I didn't know who was, I didn't know who was coming up.
Mr. Penna.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. This property was originally cited on March 5th, 2012, as the owner stated for a utility easement that was overgrown. It went for periods of time without any response from the property owner, even though we certified mailed, regular mailed, every notice to the house. And that's why the lien was placed by the Code Enforcement Board. Over the period of time, it accumulated to, I believe, it's $3,900 plus the penalties and recording fees.
Okay.
So we have no objection to mitigating the fine. So it's up to you all to decide.
Okay, I would like to hear from the city attorney and the manager.
Well, that was a recommendation by the department, so I really have nothing to report.
Okay, Madam Manager.
Yes, and I think for the record, and I think, again, I go back to the same argument that each case should be weighed on its own merit, every mitigation case. And I have a question for the record for Mr. Penna. Mr. Penna, were there any structural changes to the house that basically, where she, this property fell out of compliance?
No, this has to do with the maintenance of the property.
Just the overgrown easement?
Correct.
Is that what the violation? The utility easement, okay. This is obviously not a structural issue, and obviously.
We have a, we kinda had a deal with our neighbor in the back, and she, we like, we would do it one time, she would do it other day. But she had a real problem, like, her husband died on 13th Street, like, he died in a motorcycle accident, and the house has been like on sale. It's not 13th Street, I'm sorry, it's 15, no, it's 13th Street. So it must have been in that area. I'm sure she probably has a lien on her house, too.
No, maybe.
I don't know if she does or not. Oh, she ended up killing, I guess she.
I don't remember what the story is.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Harold Caicedo, 6279 Southwest 14th Street. And what happened is that we had a deal with the neighbor, like my wife just said. And, but we didn't know that she, that she had killed herself. And we, I mean, that's probably the same time that we, I guess, we usually pay someone to clean the easement and to keep it, you know, but we had like a, you know.
Agreement.
Exactly, an agreement. Where we'll do it this month, and then she will do it the next month. And this happened, and we didn't know that, you know, that the house was empty. I don't know if the house, I think it's still, yeah, still for sale. So this, this probably happened around that time.
Okay.
So that's.
Thank you, thank you for the information. Any further, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are, and based on what has been done in the past, the city clerk gave you three scenarios, one of them being a 10%, 12% mitigation, and 15%. There is a total of, in liens due to the city, of $5,274 that have accrued on this property, against this property. And they, those have become liens against the properties. Because it is an easement issue, I would recommend that you go on the low end of it. I would recommend a 10% at least so that we can recover staff time. And obviously, the file, the management of the file and the clerk's time. And I would ask you to stay on the low end because there's really no major issue here involving any work that has been done without a permit.
And the amount of lien.
Is 10%. That would be $527.40.
Okay, so staff is good with that?
Mr. Penna, are you okay with that, with the 10%? Do you have any, do you object to that, sir?
Okay. Okay, any questions from the board?
Yes, I do. Will that cover our costs?
We don't have a specific breakdown of the costs, but I can tell you that, obviously, we've had to, we've had to spend time on the file. Mr. McDermott has spent his time with the inspections and dealing with the issue of the notices, the postage, and putting it before the Code Enforcement Board because this did go through a process before it came to you tonight. And I wanna say that this will cover the staff time. And obviously, the filing of the lien, you know, that has a cost to the city. Not only in kind by putting in the employee's time, but it has an actual cash cost to the city.
Okay, any further question? Okay, I need a motion.
I make a motion. Second.
Okay. Actually, you need to read the resolution, I'm sorry.
And would you agree to this to be payable within 90 days as customary is done, before December 20th? It's 90 days.
I have a, I have a request. Just because I'm a teacher, and I really wanna get this. I need, I need some kind of paperwork that I could submit back to the bank. If I could pay, if you say fights $500, if I could pay like $200, and then you give me 90 days to pay the other part of it because Harold's in school, so I could get my modification done. I mean, whatever, I wanna be able to get my modification, whatever I need, the paperwork, to be able to get a paper that I can send to the bank that says, here, she's, you know, and I mean, $500 right today is gonna be a lot for me to pay today, but can I guarantee you that you make a deal with me and I pay you something today, and that I pay you the rest by December so that I can get this organized with my bank? I would really be.
I need, I need a legal counsel on that. Mr. Attorney?
I mean, I don't get paid until the things.
Installments?
I know, but I.
Yeah, I know, that's.
Well, it's up to the board to determine, to the commission to determine the payment and how the payment is going to be made. Certainly, of course, if that payment has to be made in whole into a lot of timeframe, otherwise, the fine usually goes up to the original fine. So it's up to the.
I can, I can find the money if not, I can go. But it was just that, in two weeks, when I get like my full paycheck again, but I wanna get those papers back to the bank. So that's why I wanted to know what's the most, what's the amount I have to pay.
Would you tell us what you're asking, please?
I'm asking you, I don't know, I could pay $250 today, and then you could give me a paper that I could send to the bank that says, like, within like a week, that I could send and say, look, so I don't have to redo all the modification papers is the thing. Because you know how that is, you have to resubmit. I have to do everything over to the bank, and they've already given me a nice deal at 2%.[1547.86] over to the bank, and they've already given me a nice deal at 2%. So, it's a really nice deal I have right now.
The commission has the power to just go ahead and establish a timeframe in which the, the whole amount should be paid. Whether they pay the half now, or half later, or the entire amount at some point, that's okay.
No, but my question is, where's my lien?
Please, please. My question is very simple, Mr. Attorney. Uh, in order for us to clear the record, I, I...
To release the lien?
To release the lien.
You cannot release the lien, sir.
Okay, so that's the question.
All right.
That's the question.
That's what I need to...
That's the question. So, that's the question. Uh, so, so then the amount has to be paid in full.
That's right.
Until, I mean...
That's right.
Okay. All right.
So, let me ask you. So, you agreed to pay in full before...
December 20th, 90 days.
Within a week. I'll pay in full, maybe tomorrow. Don't worry. I'll do it.
Before 90 days, you have to pay in full?
Yeah.
Uh, she... That's the agreement.
I agree before 90 days to pay in full. And as soon as I pay in full, you will release my lien?
Yeah, that's the agreement.
Okay.
Okay.
That's what I needed to know, was if I needed to pay in full for you to release the lien?
It's very simple. You have 90 days to go with the check and pay.
Right.
You know, mine, yeah.
Okay, wait, wait, wait a second.
Would you allow me, Mr. Mayor, to read the item? Item 11B, Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami Authorizing the City Manager to Accept a Mitigation Offer in the Amount of $527.40 from Angela Bakedano on Code Enforcement Lien for Code Violations at the Property Located at 6279 Southwest 14th Street, West Miami, Florida, Providing that if payment in full is not paid by December 20th, 2014, then the amount owed shall revert to the original amount, providing for effective date, Mayor and City Commission. I have a motion by Commissioner Blanca, seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez.
You have to establish the time, though.
She did.
90 days, yes. Um, okay, um...
Is 90, 70? Motion.
No, 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 we had a motion, we had a second, call the vote, please.
November. Let me, um, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I apologize. 90 days is November 20th, right?
August, September, October, November.
November, yes.
November. November 20th, by November 20th, uh, on the motion, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez? Uh, Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
5-0, item passes.
Thank you.
So, you will prepare a resolution, uh, we'll forward the resolution to you, that, and with the payment, the liens will be released. That should suffice for you, too.
If we bring you a check tomorrow?
If you pay tomorrow, we'll send the papers to the, to the, to the county records for the lien to be released.
Um, Mr. Mayor, if I may, obviously, once we forward that to the clerk of the court, I know, that's the ball is on their court.
Yeah, that's why I need to get it moved, because I need to get my paperwork.
All right.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, night. Uh, next, next item?
Before Thanksgiving?
No.
Good. Thank you.
Item 11C, Recommendation by the Office of the City Manager in Reference to Renewal of City of West Miami Medical, Dental, Vision, and Life Insurance Programs by City Manager and the Florida League of Cities.
Uh, thank you, um, Mr. Mayor. We have issued a memorandum dated August 5th, 2014, and it talks to the issue of the renewal of the city's medical plan through the Florida, actually, the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, FMIT, as we know it. Uh, for the last two years, we have actually enjoyed a, a good relationship with the folks over at the FMIT. Uh, the city has received the insurance renewal numbers. Mr. Aaron Carper is here, representing FMIT this evening, uh, for the fiscal year commencing 10/1, 2014, through September 30th, 2015. And, uh, we are submitting to you and recommending to you that we go ahead and be authorized to renew our insurance, uh, with the FMIT program. The, um, the, the program itself has helped us maintain, um, costs, even though with the rising cost of medical, of providing a good comprehensive program, medical, life, dental, and prescription, um, and, and vision. Um, we have actually been able to contain costs without having to pass an inordinate amount of mon, money on to the employees at the paycheck level, because obviously, some of our salaries are not as competitive. That being said, we've looked at the renewal numbers. Initially, we planned for a 10% increase. However, our expected increase for next year, based on Aaron's information, is 8.7%, which is, uh, a lot less than the national average. I've attached a copy of a Miami Herald, uh, article that appeared on Monday, August 4th, 2014, which talks about, uh, the actual increases in premium, um, of, of what we're seeing, um, in, in, in the nation, actually. And people are looking at an average of 13% to 14% increases on their medical insurance renewals. So, uh, based on that, based on the relationship and the, and the overall program and the way that it's working, we actually recommend that you authorize us to renew the, uh, medical program. And again, Aaron Carper is here with the FMIT this evening. You may want to hear from him. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Carper, come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And welcome once again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Madam Manager, Aaron Carper with the Florida League of Cities. Uh, it's good to see you all, and I hope you all are doing well. Uh, you know, as Madam Manager had mentioned, the cost of health care these days are, are still rising. Things are not going down. Uh, and actually, the average of the increases in the insurance this past year have been greater than they were last year, or even the year before. Uh, depending on, you know, the source, you know, we're seeing an average of about 10 or 10 and a half percent increase in the group insurance market, uh, you know, here in Florida. Uh, it's about three or three and a half points more than it was even last year. I think last year was about 7%. Uh, and so, we're all facing challenges, and, uh, you know, insurers now are really pushing the importance of a, a workplace wellness program as a way to help mitigate costs and, and keep folks healthy, out of the doctor, and away from the claim dollars that are being spent. And, you know, the league is aggressively pursuing that as well, with our own Hometown Health Wellness Program, uh, that's exclusive to municipalities that the city is participating in. And all of the cities in the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust Health Program participate in at no additional cost, uh, you know, really as a way for, for us to, to continue to control those costs and, and pass along numbers, uh, like we're doing here, uh, this year. Another couple of points under trend, you know, we're doing the right things, and, you know, this 8.7%, you know, it, you know, in addition to the promise that we're going to continue to do everything we can on our end to, to keep these numbers as consistent as possible, uh, and, and do what's best for our cities, and, and, and help you all out with your budgets, 'cause, you know, whether it be here in West Miami, or all the way up in Pensacola, you know, things are still very difficult, and, you know, we need to stick together to do everything we can to, um, you know, to save as much money as possible, but also perform, you know, and provide the best benefits that we can for our employees. Uh, you know, at, at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions from, from anyone.
Thank you very much. Any question?
I have a question for him. Aaron, are you going, you have been so far helpful, very professional, very nice, answering calls, everything with us, at least for me.
At least with you.
Yes.
[laughing]
You have been very good. Are you going to be the same way next year?
I will be the same way.
Even your twin, new twins, you know?
Now, I have, uh, year-old twins, or 11 and a half-month-old twins. Uh, I still will take your call, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I have a question, if I may, sir. I know that you're introducing a new dental program as part of the United Healthcare PPO. Is that, am I correct in that assumption?
Offering a, are you referring to the DHMO program?
That is correct.
Okay. And that is a four-fee dental program, and the benefit is a little bit lower than, than your current level, uh, where I believe the premium is, you know, in the mid-teens, but it is a fixed cost per service. So, the root canal has a, a specified cost on it. Uh, any sort of maintenance, or, or, or work, or surgery, has a specific amount, as stated in that brochure. Uh, the, the network is very competitive.
So, that's between an HMO and a PPO?
It's HMO and a PPO. At the end of the day, the PPO program is...
Is the richer.
Is richer, and it is above and beyond, uh, you know, what the HMO is. The HMO just is a, you know, really a cost containment tool, uh, you know, for some of our cities that, uh, you know, don't have the opportunity to, to provide that full program for their employees.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, can...
Let me clarify one thing. You talking about the PPO for the dental?
Yes, sir.
That's what we have?
That's what we have, and now they're introducing another option for those employees that may want to consider...
They have a choice, too.
A choice.
If I may, Madam Manager, it's one or the other.
One or the other, right.
So, it would be either the PPO program...
Right.
Or the HMO.
Right.
The person have the choice to select which plan is better for them.
They would not. There would be one plan that is offered for the city. So, the city of West Miami would be offered one plan.
I see, okay.
One plan or the other, for everybody?
One plan or the other for everybody.
Now, you clarify.
Okay.
I'm recommending, Mr. Mayor, that we stay with the PPO at least this one, one more year.
That's what we have now, right?
We have made the budget provisions to incorporate the increases on the employer contribution side. We're taking in payroll contributions, and obviously, I, I, we monitor this. Every three, four months, we run reports to see what we're paying in premium, what we're receiving from the employees, and anything in excess of what we budgeted, and we're taking in from contributions, we would have to go back to the employee at some point next year and ask them to maybe pay a little bit more.
And also...
I think the PPO would be the best plan.
Also, they increase the lowest in, in...
Yep.
Compared with another insurance company.
Right.
So, we, I wish you keep that way.
Yes, sir.
And Madam Manager, also, with regards to the life insurance, my apologies for not having an answer, uh, sooner than this evening. We have been negotiating with our current carrier to get those rates down a little bit more, because they did not seem competitive, uh, you know, to our municipalities. I did get word this evening, as I was talking with an area before the meeting, we did have approval. We've come to an agreement. I'll have rates for you in the morning.
Okay.
And they will be significantly lower than current.
Great.
So, that'll be...
Always helps.
Some good news first thing in the morning.
Thank you.
Good.
Call me early.
[laughing]
Or call an area.
Okay, uh, can you read the resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11D, Resolution of the Mayor and the City Commission of the City of West Miami Authorizing the City Manager to Renew the, the October 1st, 2014, through September 30th, 2015, Medical, Dental, Vision, Life, and Prescription Problems with the Florida Municipal Trust Fund, Providing for a October 1st, 2014 Renewal Date, Providing for Effective Date by Mayor and City Commission.
I make a motion?
Second.
Okay, can you call the vote, please?
Yes. Commissioner Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
5-0, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, very nice to see you.
Thank you. Nice to see you back, Aaron.
Bye, um...
Next item, please.
Yes, item 11F, Recommendation by the Office of the City Manager in Reference to Renewal of Agreement Between Ecostrata Services, Inc., for the Purpose of Grant Writing Services to the City of West Miami by City Manager.
Thank you.
Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Ecostrata, contract renewal time. Um, we, actually, the city, the city commission authorized Robert Ruano's company, Ecostrata Services, Inc., to be the city's grant writer, um, after we lost a former grant writer that we had. And I have to tell you that I have, uh, only come to known, to know, uh, Mr. Ruano a short period of time, but I'm highly impressed by his professionalism, his knowledge, and his perseverance to go after grants, uh, on our behalf. I know that he does an array of other municipal services, but as far as I'm concerned, um, after our initial meeting with the department directors, and after he got to know the city, um, he hit the ground running, um, and, um, I believe that he is a good fit for our city. Um, it should be noted that grants do not supplant operational expenses, but they add quality-of-life projects to the city, and they enhance what we fund with our operational dollars. And I find that it is a necessary component to our mission of delivering excellent city services. That being said, with, uh, and with changing times, the city needs to continue promoting ideas that keep our city in line with bringing alternatives to funding capital improvements, equipment purchases, while addressing the capital improvement plan as adopted by our comp plan, uh, through the state of Florida. Ecostrata has been diligent in pursuing those grants to augment our parks and recreational facilities and a forestry plan. Uh, those efforts have been devoted to pursuing law enforcement equipment as well, and grants to make sure that our department stays competitive with other cities. And of course, this involves bringing new initiatives and projects that have a, bring a direct benefit to the city. So, um, that being said, and the incredible job that Robert has done, and the relationship that he's built with the city, we are recommending that you all authorize us to extend the contract for grant writing services, coinciding with our fiscal year that commences October 1st, 2014, through the end of next fiscal year, September 30th, 2015. We have incorporated a list of the grants that, uh, Mr. Ruano has pursued on behalf of the City of West Miami. It's attached to my memorandum and a part of your agenda packet. And out of the six, uh, actually, five grants that we've actually applied for, um, we've been funded, uh, at, uh, two, uh, two grants have been funded. One by the Department of Agriculture, and that is a $10,000 garden club, um, native tree, uh, planting, tree planting program, and, um, a firehouse subs, which is a emergency equipment, the defibrillators for the police department. And, um, both grants have a total of over $20,000. So, definitely, Mr. Ruano's pursuing the right projects for the city. There's a template agreement, or a, actually, a suggested a professional service agreement between the City of West Miami and Ecostrata Services, Inc. And, uh, basically, it outlines the responsibility of the, of Ecostrata, and the responsibility, obviously, the relationship with the city. It talks about the compensation. Um, the, um, Mr. Ruano has agreed to, uh, remain at a rate of, um, $1,750 per month for 12 months. That money has been incorporated into the city's budget. Um, and again, he has committed to, um, completing or pursuing, uh, I think it's a total of eight grants for next fiscal year. Uh, Mr. Ruano's here this evening. Mr. Mayor, you may want to hear from him. Uh, but I highly recommend that we continue our, our, our work with Ecostrata Services. And if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Mr. Ruano? By the way, before you start, I, uh, since you've been, uh, working with the city, I heard only the best from you, and, uh, I'm very pleased to hear that.
Thank you.
Uh, because, uh, we're a small city, and we need to be competitive, we need to be on the cutting edge, and, uh, and you fit those qualifications, and that's great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm glad to hear that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Mayor, Mayor, and members of the commission. Um, there's not really much to say. She said a lot. But, um, quite frankly, I've been very pleased myself. Um, I work with other cities and work with nonprofits, and it has been a real pleasure working with this city and working with this manager and her staff. Um, everybody is very professional, they're very knowledgeable, so they make my job a lot easier. Um, when we ask for information, we get it right away, and I know sometimes it's been at the last minute, because sometimes that's how grants are. Um, but we get it right away, and, uh, working with all their staff, and it's been wonderful. Um, I just wanted to say, just, just going forward, we've identified a number of, a number of grants, uh, going forward. Um, as a matter of fact, I will say one thing. Out of the three grants that have been noticed now, um, one was not, I'll tell you, going down the list, one was not awarded, which was, uh, basketball court shading structure. It made the state's priority list, but unfortunately, the, the money that they, that they allocated was not enough to make it to where, where it came out on the list. But, good news about that is that the next program out there, which is, uh, FORDAP, which you've applied for before, I've spoken to the state, and they say it's a, it's an excellent project to go after the same grant for this program, and that should be out in about September. And that's for $149,000, and we're very hopeful. She actually said that we would score very well for that. So, we're hopeful that we'll get that. Okay?
Okay.
And I think we're gonna talk about some other grants, uh...
Later on in the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, if you have any questions.
Any questions for, uh, Mr. Ruano?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How are you? Are you okay?
I'm great.
You look great.
Huh?
You look great. He's a very decent and very honest and very professional person, I tell you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to...
No, no, Mr. Mayor.
Wait, wait, wait.
Not that quick, not that quick. We need, we need to hear from...
Use too fast, use too fast.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, we do want to avoid the issue that every year we have to...
Absolutely.
...go out for bidding, and so on and so forth. So, I have, I would recommend to the commission, I have, um, already spoken to the manager, to extend this to, uh, more than one year. In other words, uh, the gentleman does not have to come, uh, next year and do the same thing. And, uh, it would be, uh, up to the option of the, uh, city manager to extend it to two years, um, provided that, of course, he meets the, uh, the requirement, and so on and so forth. But, uh, this, this would avoid, uh, the specter of, perhaps, having to go every year to, uh, the same routine of going and, uh, looking out for, uh...
Other people.
Suppliers, and so on and so forth. And, uh, it does, uh, cost the administration time and money. Um, I understand that prior to the engagement of, uh, this gentleman, uh, the administration went through a very lengthy process of, uh, inquiring around, uh, the industry, and he found to be, he was found to be, uh, well below the market, as far as his, um, cost is concerned. So, respectfully, I would, uh, recommend that, uh, you extend it to two years, uh, provided that, of course, the administration recommends it.
What's, uh, well, I, I need to hear from the administration and Mr. Ruano.
You're right.
Mr., uh, Ruano, you're first.
Well, since I heard well before, below the market, I need to up the, uh, the contract, don't I?
That's why I need you speaking first.
That's fine. I'm very happy to hear that.
Apparently, we enhance the, uh...
I don't have a problem with it. I mean, we can talk about your retainer fees at the end of next year, but...
Yeah.
I, I, I would like to continue doing business with Ecostrata, and I think that it's a good fit for the city. Like I said, he, he already knows us, he knows what the needs are. He's now very comfortable with pursuing grants on behalf of the city. So, instead of going through this exercise every year, I think we should extend the contract, as Mr. Villalobos said, uh, for a period of two years. And, and then we can talk about retainer next year.
Form the recommendation of the manager.
Fine.
And we can, that comes up during the budget process, so...
Okay.
Okay? If, if you accept those terms, uh, we're fine.
Okay.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Yes.
I have a motion.
Uh, no, not yet. They need to read the resolution.
Okay, well, but that...
The resolution.
To clarify this for two years.
The resolution, uh, should be amended to read, Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami Authorizing the City Manager to Enter into an Agreement with Ecostrata Services, Inc., for the Purpose of Grant Writing Services to the City of West Miami, Securing Eight Grant Applications. In this case, I don't know, in a period of two years, we probably will secure more.
Let's say eight per year.
Per year, eight per year applications, uh, for a period of two years, commencing October 1st, 2014, through September 30th, 2016, Providing for a $1,750 monthly retainer fee, Providing for Effective Date by Mayor and City Commission.
Motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Suarez.
Need a second? Need a second?
Second.
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Rodriguez.
Commissioner Ronda Rodriguez.
And on the motion for the resolution with the proposed amendments, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanis?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Thank you. You're not unhappy about my recommendation, are you? Item G.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 11G, "Discussion Regarding Tutoring Program for the After-School Care at the West Miami Recreation Center for School Year 2014-15," by Commissioner Ronda Rodriguez.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would ask to defer this until our next meeting.
Okay.
The city manager and I are working with other people, and we're trying to, I'd like to bring a more solid program. Right now, we're still getting information, so I don't want to present it to you until, you know, I have a very solid program to present. Madam Manager, if you have anything to add to that?
Commissioner, I'm fine with that, and again, we will assist in providing a well-developed proposal so that the commission can entertain at the next meeting, if we're ready at the next meeting.
Okay.
So, Madam Clerk, if you could just put this on the next meeting?
Yes, the item has been postponed until the meeting of September 3rd, 2014.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye. Next item?
Next item, item 11H, "Report/Assessment by the Office of the City Manager Regarding the Use by Residents and Non-Residents at the Recreation Center for Summer Camp and After-School Care and Recommendations for Increases in Fees for the 2014-15 Fiscal Year to Cover Expenses" by City Manager and Recreation Center Director.
Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I ask you to hear from Mr. Geswicki, our Parks and Recreation Director, during the budget deliberations and our meetings with you all initially, we have seen, and we actually brought this out during our discussions, we have seen a tremendous increase in the amount of money that is spent by the city to hire recreation center leaders and summer camp staff. Our program is getting so popular, and the word is out there that we run a tremendous program, that we have more kids than what the city has ever experienced. That raises our costs because we have to provide adequate childcare for both summer camp and after-school activities. Although a mil of our tax dollars is dedicated to parks and recreation, it is not enough to cover 100% of the expenses at the rec center. So we have to offset some of those costs by implementing some modest fees so that we can cover expenses and close our gap and meet our budget goals. That being said, I would ask you to hear from Jim Geswicki, our Parks and Recreation Director, so that you understand the need to increase the after-school care program fees, and also, we could talk a little bit about summer camp, and Jim can give you some of the statistics for the park.
Jim?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Yolanda, friends, fellow countrymen, Romans.
There you go.
I'll start with the after-school program. Last year, we were serving 150 children daily at the end of the school year. About 45 were non-residents and about 105 were residents of West Miami. Residents received free after-school care, residents, they paid a one mil tax, and over the years, I've checked back on prior budgets, and 12 to 15 years ago, the one mil comprised over 90% of what we had in expenses. We didn't have any other outside income coming in to pay, and currently, it's just about a 50/50 or a little bit less. The amount that we bring in into one mil does not cover the expenses of the entire rec budget anymore. We have a lot of revenue that comes in from after-school payments, from summer camp payments, and in doing this year's budget, I crunched the numbers for the after-school line item. It showed $60,000 to pay for staff, to pay for the kids. And the actual numbers, I worked out on a sheet of paper for every employee that I have and how many hours they work for the entire year, times what they make, and we came out with a shortfall of about $40,000, just on after-school alone. Part of that reason is that we have a bigger percentage of residents compared to non-residents. If we had a high percentage of non-residents attending the after-school program and they're paying, then we're bringing in more money relatively to pay for the staffing. But as that number has been more and more residents than non-residents, that's part of the shortfall. The other thing is that we're paying staff more than we did since the last time we raised rates. You know, prices are going up, cost of living is going up, and to tell you the truth, we've got on our staff, not counting myself and Mr. Lopez, we've got four-year degrees, but I have three staff members that have four-year degrees. And that's saying a lot for people that provide an after-school program, providing care for children. You've got, you know, 20% of the staff has four-year degrees, and that, you can't pay them $8 an hour, $8.50, they need a little bit more. That's the point that we've gotten to. As far as summer camp goes, this past summer, we had six certified Miami-Dade County Schools teachers on our staff. The level of care during our summer camp is better than any camp you're going to find in Dade County. When you have schoolteachers on the field or in the building, you know, it's just like having an off-duty policeman around. He's still got to do his job wherever he is, and he knows what he's supposed to do. And teachers are used to handling, and they can foresee problems before they happen. So we have six of them on our staff. They haven't had a raise in eight years. The last time that their rate increased was eight years ago, and I'm not looking for money to give them a raise, I'm just saying, you know, they're working, we're providing an excellent service, but it's not cheap. The last, on the summer camp, the last time that we initiated any kind of FEDAR on residents for summer camp, it went from zero to $20 a week, and that was 12 years ago, 2002. And for 12 years, that's stayed the same. What we're proposing is to increase that to $30 per week for residents, which is still a good deal. On the after-school program, last year, we raised the non-resident rate 50%. It went from $80 a month to $120 a month. I don't think we can put the burden on the non-residents for the after-school program, but we do need to address, you know, the fact, you know, we're giving after-school for free for residents. I hate to say it, but the time has come where we need to have the residents chip in, and it's not a large amount, it's $10 a week, $40 a month. We need that money to balance, but we need revenue to pay our staffing. In order to provide the service that we do for the amount of kids that we have, we try to provide a ratio of one counselor for every 15 children. If we don't raise the rates, if we don't have the money to pay our staff, we would have to reduce staff and do something that we've never done before, and that's put a limit on the number of kids that come to the park. And with that big building, that would be a shame. So, is there any questions?
To, if I may, and I think this is not directly associated, Mr. Mayor and members of the city commission, with the actual fee that the parents would be asked to pay for this specialized service, but it should be noted, and we talked about this downstairs before we came up, we mentioned it to Commissioner Rodriguez, is the fact that we pick up kids at school every day, the children at Sylvania Heights Elementary, and we do three bus rides, Mr. Pena, or four? Four bus rides. There is no charge to the parents, so the parents are saving about $30 a week to get their kids picked up at the school by the city. We have counselors, we put those counselors in the bus, we go to the school, we pick up the kids, we take them to the park, and we provide them up to 6:00 PM with childcare and after-school homework program. They have their snacks, they get to play, they watch movies in our TV room. So I think we're doing a lot for the residents of the city at a very low cost. So this is really basically to cover expenses, and we're not even covering expenses because the increase in the leader salary account and benefits has been exorbitant, and we don't want to limit the number of kids that go there. The idea behind the building that Chairman Blanis worked so hard and all of you to bring to the city was because we wanted to invite more kids to participate, and we wanted to have more activities. So now we have the kid, we have the building, and we have the kids. So.
Any question?
Well, I respect Jim's opinion on this. If we must, we must. I know that, you know, safety and security is always an issue, and we need to have the right number of counselors. You know, it's 15 to one. And, you know, that's one reason why our services, you know, our program is so successful. So, you know, I see no other, no other choice, and, you know, on his recommendation, you know, I will support, so.
The only question I have is, I mean, and I know the answer, but how do we compare it to other places?
Well, I don't, unless there's grants out there like a children's trust that provides free for low income, I don't know how any other, I could do a survey if you want, you know, there's other municipalities that are similar.
Jim, I have done the survey, we're lower, so.
Well, we've done them in the past.
Like I said, I knew the answer.
Yeah.
So, okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner.
Because I understand that's why West Miami, City of West Miami is a city of West Miami. That's why everybody, when they're talking about us, they respect it because our profession, way of life, and the quality of life that we have here. Now, all these qualities have a cost, that's normal, and people understand that. But now, you make a recommendation of a need that you have. Now, is a number? Is that a need that's a number? Dollars and cents, is a number? Because we're talking about what you need, but now.
$10.
Present to us, what do you think it will be?
It's in the package.
In number, in money, what do you think should be? And then, we will have to make an analysis if it's possible or not, but the need is there, that you need the money. But how much, you think is fair for our residents?
That's, we're asking you.
Besides that, we're talking about increase also for the non-residents. It's an increase for the non-residents.
We have an increase for non-residents.
And you recommending some, a small increase for residents?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what I see.
Yeah, it's the same dollar amount of an increase for the non-resident as the resident for summer camp.
Oh, the same.
It's $10 a week.
Now, the administration and you have to get together and present, the administration and you, I mean, Yolanda, the manager, so you get together and present to us how much you need, how much you think is.
Commissioner, this is the presentation. They already got together, and this is the presentation. So they waiting for our recommendation.
It's in a form of resolution, Mr. Mayor. The actual proposal is in a form of resolution because obviously, we need something that we can show the parents that it has gone through the process and it has been adopted through the legislative process.
At a meeting a couple of months ago, Yolanda and I and finance advisor Mercedes Leon went over the math.
Right.
And we just calculated what it would take to fill in that gap that I mentioned before.
Right, and we talked about it during our budget meetings, and I mean, that's the bare minimum, and we understand, acknowledge the fact that one mil coming from real estate and property taxes is devoted to the parks and recreation, so we're asking for a very nominal increase just so we could close that gap a little bit in the budget.
It's in the package.
Right, it's $40 more per week.
Yes.
I mean, I'm sorry, per month for the resident.
Wait, 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 one at a time. The city manager is talking, okay, please. Madam Manager, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
The, what was presented, what was presented, and it was discussed with staff previously coming to this meeting over here, it is, do you, are you in the position to recommend it, or you need to?
Absolutely.
You need to analyze it further, okay? So there's the answer.
No, no, we've analyzed it, and we know exactly what we need to close that gap, and it's not going to fully take care of closing the gap because, again, you know, we don't want to burden our taxpayers that are already devoting that mil to parks and recreation. So we're using other program income that the park receives from memberships and from rentals of the pavilion and rental of the center, we're using all that income to offset the expenses at the park. So this is just passing on a very, very slight increase to the parents. You're talking about four hours in the case of a lower-grade child, I think it's kindergarten through.
Yeah, K through, K and 1.
And 1, they get out at 2 o'clock, and obviously, the second to fifth grade get out at 3 o'clock. So you have three hours of childcare for the upper grades, and you have four hours of childcare for your lower grades.
Okay. You have heard from Jimmy, Jim, that we have the most respect for you, and you have always been very conscious and very careful how you present in your research, and also, we have heard from the manager, they have consulted with staff, so I think what they need is, I need to hear from the rest of the board, I mean, how you.
It's fine, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, in this case.
I need to read the resolution.
Okay, so can you read the resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Let me make this, okay. While you're presenting to us according to this memo from, the increase is the summer camp fees for non-residents, from $80 to $90 per week, $10 per week.
Yeah.
$10 per week.
Right.
Right.
The increase for summer camp residents, from 20 to 30, $10 per week, right?
Yeah.
So far, you recommend increase $10 per week. Now, West Miami residents should pay 40 per month, 10 per week for after-school program. So it's another increase of $10 there, right?
This is for the after-school?
For after-school.
Yeah.
An increase of $10, right?
Well, $10 a week, $10 a week, right now, it's free.
It's free. Now, from free to $40 a month.
Right.
So it's, well, basically, it's $10 per week.
Exactly.
Right.
That's what you presented.
Right, we're not recommending to raise the non-resident after-school because we raised it by 50% last year.
I see.
That's why we haven't recommended to raise that.
In a simple way, you recommended the $10 per week.
Yes, sir.
That's what you recommend.
Yeah.
Residents and non-residents.
Right.
$10 per week.
On the, on the summer camp, yeah.
I see clear. Yeah, for summer school and summer camp.
Summer camp, yeah.
So it's clear now, $10 per week increase is what you recommend. Is it for next year?
For summer camp, it would be next year.
Starting immediately.
Next year.
Summer camp is next summer, and then the after-school rates will start immediately.
What you recommending, $10 per week increase?
Yes, sir.
Starting immediately or October?
The after-school immediately, and then the summer camp increase would become effective next summer camp, the 10 weeks of next summer camp.
Okay.
Resolution.
Okay, can you read the resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 11I, "Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to establish the 2014-15 After-School Care Program for Resident and Non-Resident Fees and the 2015 Summer Camp Fees for Residents and Non-Residents and City Employees Whose Children Attend Summer Camp and After-School Care Programs Offered by the City of West Miami, Providing for Effective Date by Mayor and City Commission."
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanis?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Mayor, if I may, interrupt the flow of the agenda. In speaking to the city clerk, we just realized that, I know she had an amended agenda, but it was not, apparently, we copied off the old agenda, and we had one item that. we copied off the old agenda and we had one item that we need to add to the agenda, which is an item that you and I discussed, Mr. Mayor, involving a cultural grant. And because Mr. Ruano has been patiently sitting there, it's something that I would have asked to take out of turn and I would submit to the city attorney to see if it would be appropriate for us to actually present you with a concept for a grant because of the timeline involved. It is a sensitive, time-sensitive issue. It is considered an emergency for our purposes and his purposes. And so, would it be appropriate, Mr. Villalobos, to have the mayor and the commission listen to a recommendation from our office?
We need, upon the recommendation of management, I need the consensus of the commission to declare this an emergency and you may hear the item at this point.
Okay.
So be it.
Yes.
Yep. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's hear the item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you may recall, we spoke yesterday afternoon about the possibility of the city applying, again, after many years, for a grant through the application process and a grant which is through the Miami-Dade County Department of Cultural Affairs. And the funding cycle for next spring is out and there's a deadline, I believe, Mr. Ruano, September, September 5th is the deadline, so we really don't have much time. I know, Mayor, that we have in the past spoken about the possibility of an arts festival, maybe with a jazz concert. In prior years, we had the Symphony of the Americas, that's the last year that we were funded, and I actually found the list. We were funded for that in the fiscal year two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. And since then, these activities were not funded because of a bad economy. Now, the application window is open and we need to see if the commission will approve this opportunity for Mr. Ruano to pursue the grant and if he, if you can yield to him for just a couple of minutes.
Mr. Ruano, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to say, this is a county cultural affairs grant. They come out every quarter. And just in doing a kind of a routine search, found that it had just come out and due September 5th. This grant is up to, for this type of program, it's a cultural affairs, like a festival, jazz festival, music festival. It's seventy-five hundred dollars for the first quarter, that's January 1st through March 30th. It requires a fifty-fifty match, so, but it's a match of in-kind and cash. So, at the, at the least, it can be, is half of the match has to be cash. So, thirty-seven, three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars has to, the city has to have as a match. It could be under cash from general revenue, it could be from sponsorship, it could be from other grants, it could be other things, but actually it has to be cash going into the project and then another thirty-seven fifty in kind. And then, we could apply for a maximum of seventy-five hundred and it's a perfect fit for the city to apply for this. And as the manager said, you've been awarded this before for a very similar program.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, that's something that I'd, personally, I have been very interested. It's, we keep talking about the city of West Miami, this is one more thing that we can offer the citizen and also, also to let other people out there, you know, expose the city of West Miami to other people. I mean, this type of activity, it can bring anybody from a prospect, developer, from a prosper businessman, from, and besides that, you know, also to the citizen of West Miami. One more, like we have done the movie nights, like we have done, you know, and you seeing how great those are, you know, how the people get together and they really enjoy and it's one more service for the city. So, I mean, that's, that's what I... Any questions, any?
I think that enhances the quality of our...
Yep.
...our life in the city. It's a positive thing.
Okay.
Motion.
Okay.
Second.
So, we have a motion, we have a second. Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanis.
Yes.
Mayor Mujina.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. You got your work cut out for you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruano. Is that part of number eight or is that number nine?
Um...
No, never mind, never mind. Let's go into the next item. Item J, please.
Item J, report and recommendation by Chief of Police in reference to in-car video program and award made to the city through the FDOT Traffic Challenge Award two thousand and fourteen, and recommendation to purchase in-car video system unit for a total of four units with a three-year warranty by Chief Andrew.
Hello, Chief.
Commissioner, hello. This is something that I've been trying to get for our police officers for quite some time. Thanks to an award from FDOT through the efforts of Officer Fernandez and the violations that our officers wrote, we were able to get three of these cameras at a reduced cost, reduced point cost with actually no expenditures from the city. I want to do the pilot program involving the four sergeants' cars, so we need to purchase an additional unit. Again, I've been in contact with the vendor who manufactures and distributes this camera, which they've done some presentations here and the video is incredible. And the total for that additional camera, the installation of all four of them, extended warranties for all four of them, come to seven thousand twenty dollars, which in today's video age is a bargain and we can expend, I've spoken to the manager, we can expend LETF monies, which is what we've taken from drug dealers and other criminals for this purpose because it's a new program. And I'm just here to ask your authorization to use these dollars to make this purchase.
Well, we have to ask Commissioner Blanca.
With my blessing.
Any other comments, any question?
This is a very good idea.
I think it's a great idea.
It is.
One more, one more time, we want to congratulate you bringing our police department to today's time.
We're trying slowly but surely, Mr. Mayor. All we need is money.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes.
If I may ask the chief?
Yes, ma'am.
Chief, you may have answered it, but there's so many things going on. Pardon me for not, maybe you did tell me, but what I want to know is the continued support agreement on this, on these equipment. Do you foresee that they will become expenses and expensive in years to come? And can those operational expenses that come after the fact be funded through LETF?
I believe so. There is no service contract other than, that's why I'm including to make it, the warranty extend for three, a total of three years. So, there will be no additional expenses until the end of that warranty period should something break after the third year.
So, we're fully insured for three years, bumper-to-bumper warranty, as they call it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's good.
Yep.
Okay, can you read the resolution, please?
Yes, item eleven K, a resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to spend a total of seven thousand twenty dollars from LETF Law Enforcement Trust Fund for the purchase of one unit in-car video system to fund the installation of four in-car video system in squad cars assigned to the West Miami Police Department as deemed appropriate by the Office of the Chief of Police, providing for the purchase of a three-year warranty for said equipment, authorizing a sum of seven thousand twenty dollars for said expense from what guard digital in-car video at no cost to the taxpayer, providing for severability, providing for effective date by Mayor and City Commission.
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanis.
Yes.
Mayor Mujina.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Chief, so we have four cars with four cameras.
That's our initial pilot program. Hopefully, we'll find funding to put them in all the other ones as well.
I'm sorry that Robert left, so he can look for a grant. I know, I know.
Next item, please.
Item eleven L, resolution of the Mayor and the City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager the expenditure of twenty-one thousand four hundred seventy dollars and twelve cents in connection with the repairs of a sewage pump for lift station number two, Southwest Eighth Street and Sixty-Fifth Avenue payable to Heatra Services, Inc., providing for effective date by Mayor and City Commission.
Mr. Bla, Mr. Penna, can you bring, you should bring us some good news to us.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, first, I request that we change our name to Mayberry.
Yeah.
Second, the bumper-to-bumper warranty on this pump left a long time ago.
Oh, yeah, I know.
And we need twenty-one thousand dollars to repair it. It's been down now for several months because we were looking at the option of removing this old pump and replacing it with newer and cheaper models, but we just don't have the money at this time, so we'll need to bite the bullet and repair this one. But it's, the only thing, the location is not Eighth Street and Sixty-Fifth Avenue, it's actually Twentieth Street and Sixty-seventh Avenue.
Okay.
Twentieth Street?
And Sixty-seventh Avenue.
And Sixty-seventh Avenue.
Lift station number two is the one on Twentieth Street.
Any questions for Mr. Penna?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is the sixty-fifth and Eighth Street, right?
No.
No.
No. Twentieth, Twentieth and Sixty-sixth.
And Sixty-sixth Avenue. This is the pump station, the small pump station that...
Lift station number two.
Yes, the address is incorrect.
The lift station number is correct.
Oh, the address is incorrect.
But the address is incorrect.
That's why I was surprised at what it is.
Yes.
All right, well, now, we should be ready for it because we are now in the season with hurricanes and those problems, so we have to be sure that...
No, this is, this is sewer.
This is sewer.
Well, but still.
Yeah, it needs to be working.
Still, when we have a problem with floods and that, the sewer is almost more important than the...
Yes, sir.
That's for sure.
Very important on my list.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to be sure.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask something? Juan, how long have those pumps been on the ground now?
These pumps were put in, in two thousand, so they're about fourteen years old.
Time to change.
I thought it was like fifteen, so, yeah.
Yep. Timeframes.
I make a motion.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanis.
Yes.
Mayor Mujina.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Okay, next item.
Item eleven M, resolution of the Mayor and the City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase of a new B C fifteen hundred fifteen capacity brush chipper with tier four one, four I engine for the total amount of fifty-one thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars and zero cents, utilize in GSA impact fees, funds and general funds surplus vehicle sales, providing for effective date by Mayor and City Commission.
Mr. Penna, Jim just came over here asking for ten dollars.
Well, as you know, we bought a new bucket truck in two thousand and twelve, but we are running it with an old chipper. So, the bucket truck is not efficient if it doesn't have a chipper behind it to get rid of the brush that we chip, that we cut. The one that we have is from nineteen ninety-two. That makes it twenty-something years old. And as you saw recently in Fort Lauderdale, there was an accident where somebody went through the chipper because of safety features that are no longer working on the old chippers. Ours has the safety features, but these, this new one actually comes with better features than what the old ones had. Has bigger capacity for fifteen-inch logs and we have used it up to twelve inches, so we need this desperately. The other one, every time, it just broke down, actually, like it's been down for about three weeks. And we finally, we finally got the part, but the part that we got was three thousand dollars, so why keep pouring good money into a piece of old equipment? We need to replace it and then as soon as we get the new one, we'll put this one up for bid and I'm sure we'll get probably ten to twelve thousand dollars on it.
Thank you. And Madam Manager, where's this money coming from again?
From GSA funds and surplus...
Impact fees.
Impact fees.
And surplus vehicle sales.
And all the equipment that we've sold off over this year.
Okay.
The equipment proceeds were close to sixteen...
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand, oh, because we went to two auctions, okay.
Motion.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanis.
Yes.
Mayor Mujina.
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item eleven N, this is the yearly evaluation of the city manager by Mayor and City Commission.
Thank you. Well, is that time of the year again? Let me start by saying that, and it doesn't matter how many times you say it, personally, I am very proud of our manager and I'm sure a lot of you are very proud of our manager for the work that she does. And I don't know if you know this, but our manager is the longer-standing manager within all the municipalities in the county, so...
Not the oldest.
Longest.
Oh.
No, no, not oldest. No, no, no. I...
Thank you.
Five, please.
Thank you.
Don't put words in my mouth. That's not what I said.
I want to be sure.
Rewind the tape, please.
I want to be sure.
Okay. So, with that said, I mean, every year, I'm glad we talk about this because it doesn't matter how many times we say thank you, be a, you know, talking or giving a plaque or et cetera, or compensation-wise, in my book, I think we will never come close to the service that you render to the city and the commitment that you have to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And with that, I give the floor to the rest of the commission.
Well, may I?
Yes.
Let me tell you, you said you're proud of the manager, but let me tell you something. I'm not talking about if I am proud of, we are proud of her. I'm talking about when you pass by the front, seven o'clock PM, she's working there. Talking about the hours she put here. Sometimes it's Friday, Saturday and she's working. And then five-thirty, six-thirty, meetings and she always is available. And somebody was telling me the other day that, he asked, is still Yolanda managing the city? I said, yes. She said, oh, my God, Yolanda is so dependable, she always there? I said, yeah, she likes, she likes to be there. She likes to be in the city home. So, let me tell you. I know it has been some kind of evaluation for the employees, but I tell you, I think at least we should, my recommendation is at least six percent.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, Commissioner Blanca.
Thank you. I would like to have a friendly amendment. May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I want to add 4% more. Mrs. Aguilar is the longest-serving, I have to repeat it, city manager in Miami-Dade County. She's been with us for over 30 years. She works very long hours and weekends, always available at night and weekends. She has guided the finance of the city during difficult times, as we all know. I could go on and on, but, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. What was your recommendation, Commissioner Suarez?
6%.
6%? And you said...
I want to amend for more.
Okay. So you're talking about 10?
That's correct.
Uh, yes, Vice Mayor.
I would like to add that I don't think any other city can provide the type of service, personalized service that we provide. Number one, because we're a small city, and, you know, the city manager, as well as the police chief, and all the administrators, they just about know all the residents, and they understand what the needs are and what services need to be rendered. Sometimes a resident will come and require a question from the city manager, and the city manager will know already what the issue is because she's, you know, she's, the institutional knowledge that she has is overwhelming, and, you know, by the number of years that she's been here and as a resident, so, you know, and that is a plus, that is something that is, you can't put a, you know, a value to it, it's an intangible that, you know, it creates, you know, a service that is unparalleled, so I do agree with Commissioner Blanca. I think it's time to compensate her appropriately. Not only is she one of the longest-serving city managers in the county, but she's probably one of the lowest-paid city managers comparable with cities our size, so...
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Well, you all obviously have been working a lot longer than I have with the city manager in an official capacity, and I somewhat alluded to this a couple of meetings ago, that since April, I have been in complete awe of how much is done in the back office by the city manager and her staff. It's amazing what they get done back there, for the good of our city, for the good of us, and I see how much there is to do that I never saw before. So I'm going to yield to you all as far as percentage because I don't know enough yet, you know, for that, so I'm going to yield to your experience and your recommendation, but I have just been blown away by how much she does, and it's just amazing, so I wholeheartedly agree with everything that every one of you have said, seeing that in just the short time that I've been here, and you guys have seen it for a lot longer than I have, so I definitely agree with everything that's been said.
Thank you.
Make a motion.
Thank you.
Before you make a motion, I need to make some comments, and you're probably going to think I said, what happened with your original comments? The only thing that I have to, in kind of in my mind, the resolution that I have to make in my mind, yes, she is performing tremendously, she deserves whatever the percentage happens to be, but one thing that we keep in mind, we got to keep in mind, is we got to be physically responsible in how we proceed. I know we're doing a lot better city-wise, the city is in the, is recovering from financial crisis that we had years ago, and every year we do a little better, but we're not totally out, we still need to close that gap, and it is important that we close that gap, so we, you know, before we make a decision, reflect on the budget that is ahead of us, reflect on whatever is being proposed for the rest of the employees that work here, you know, so take it to heart, think about it, and by this, I don't mean at all, I'm not taking away any of what I said, it's that as the mayor, I feel responsible to make a decision that is prudent and in accordance with, you know, protocol, finding the future that is ahead, so that's all I'm going to say. So...
So I make a motion to...
All right.
Do it at 10%.
To make the motion six per four.
That's 10%.
You make a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, so it's first and a second. Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Rodriguez, have you voted?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mojina?
Uh, it's, you know, okay, I voted yes, so, all right, tough decision. Motion passes.
Thank you. May I?
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, and I say this year after year after year, I don't think a lot of people realize what kind of jewel we have in the city of West Miami, but it starts at the top. I cannot recall the last time that I had the privilege and the honor to work for such a fine group of individuals with such a caring vision and a genuine interest for the city and the citizens that they represent, and that's all about you. When the example is good at the top, and it's the same type of relationship that we have at home with our kids, if you set the right example, everything else that flows down flows very smooth. So we get our marching orders from you, we make recommendations that we believe that are good fits or make sense for the community, but unless you buy into these and you set yourself some goals, we are basically handcuffed, and I cannot remember the last time that we have had such a cohesive commission. Not everybody always has to agree on every single issue, but I believe that all of you are here for a common purpose, and that is for the greater good of the city of West Miami. You have been instrumental in paving the way for the future of West Miami, so it makes my job easier, but also I have to bring in the team, as they call it. My job would be a lot harder if I didn't have the assistance and the support and the relationship that I have with our department directors. That is second to none, that is unique, I don't think that there's another city out there in Miami-Dade County that has this, the dynamics that our city has. Everywhere I go, we talk about, at the managers' luncheons, we talk about tenured employees, we talk about department directors, and people come and go, and there's no real stake, but there is in my case, there is, I live here, I grew up here, I have a vested interest, I have all my childhood memories here on 13th Street, and now I pass those on to my children, and they have also benefited from being part of the city. So all these little contributing factors make my job easier, I am as enthusiastic with or without the race because I love what I do, I have a passion for what I do, and I would not change this for anything in the world, and I'm honored and I'm privileged to work for the Mayor and City Commission and for the citizens of the city. So I thank you for your kind words.
As I said, together for the better West Miami.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Can I say something? Yes. I might not be the oldest city attorney.
I didn't say oldest. Clarify, please.
But I'm the longest city attorney of Miami-Dade County, in fact, I think the South Florida, okay? I have never had the pleasure of having such a congenial commission, and especially when I have the opportunity, it's very hard to work in an environment whether, when you have tensions and frictions and so on and so forth, and I have seen the city developing into something nice. I speak to Yolanda Aguilar on a daily basis, my wife talks a lot, and she talks more, but anyway...
She does?
It's a, it's a real pleasure to work with Yolanda Aguilar.
Thank you, Mr. Realos.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pepe.
Okay, next item.
Next item, item 11O, yearly evaluation of the city clerk by Mayor and City Commission.
That time of the year again? My own clerk, we have seen you grow tremendously in this city, quite a bit, and especially this year, especially this year. We had a challenging year with the election, we had a challenging year with the charter review board, where, you know, it took an extra effort to bring everything in line, to make sure that the record was kept in order.
And we still have challenges, the election.
Yes, I know we still have challenges, but I, well, those challenges will go away. So, all I can say is I have seen you grow, and not only in, as a person, as a clerk, and also, you know, educational, and, you know, I know you have taken seminars, you keep improving yourself, and I'm glad to hear that, and I feel great that you're taking always a step forward to improve yourself and to improve the service to the city of West Miami, so that's, those are my words, and with that, I'll open the...
I agree with you.
You agree. Okay? Anything else?
Well, she expected you tell her, not her, any person who worked, good things, who that person works is expecting to hear more than that, expecting to hear about...
So you go ahead.
Money. I mean, you know, what they deserve because of all those good things.
Continue the sentence.
I agree, no, I agree with you that we have been growing now, the city, look at the development that there is in the 67th Avenue, look, the development is coming in 57th, you know, and all these developments, all these developments that come to the city are not coming from the, like, they are produced without a big human effort, and the people who come to the city to invest in all these things, they have their lawyers, they have the architects, they have the engineers, they have the labor, but the city, we have to have the same professional people and the same responsible people to accommodate those things, see how it works, then we have a public works department, we have all these departments, and part of the work for these things, especially this year, as you said, Commissioner Rodriguez, we have been with the charter review board, we have been with many new things, we've been loaded with work, and the administration, the office, manager's office, and clerk, and the attorney, the attorney do not exist here, but anyway, it's a different thing, it's a different thing, with all these efforts, we have to understand and we have to appreciate and we have to recognize. I understand in the budget, the manager, she already proposed some numbers for everybody, and I think the clerk was proposed about a 4%.
Correct.
So I think she deserves five instead of four. She has been working very, very hard, I tell you. My recommendation is to, the evaluation for her is five.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, I'd like to echo the mayor's, you know, words, I've seen the city clerk diligently, you know, grow and mature, you know, and in that position, and, you know, she has done an outstanding job, stellar. I think that, you know, I think that we should be a little bit more, I guess generous is the word, I would say 7% instead of 5, you know, I think that she very well deserves it. You know, she's a person that, you know, it's always reachable, you know, with anything that we might need, you know, and I know that I do call her a lot for things that I need from her, and, you know, she serves as our secretary, literally, so I think she should be, you know, compensated to 7% versus 5%.
Okay. Commissioner Rodriguez?
As far as percentage, again, I'm going to yield to my colleagues because I don't have the experience to make a, I would say, educated decision on that, so I'll yield to you, but as far as personal, I think the city clerk is a very important face of our city, and Anari presents an amazing, an amazing, she fits those shoes very well, she is an amazing face for our city. So, yes, I totally agree with everything that's said, and she's done an outstanding job, and I feel like I've kind of grown with you because I came on not too long after, and she, anytime I come to her for anything, she's guided me and helped me and explained things to me, and she's just, she's an amazing face to our city.
Thank you, thank you. All right, I'll come back to that. In my case, I feel a little different, I think, I think you deserve more, but we got to be physically responsible, and I think in the short time that you've been the city clerk, you have surpassed, you know, where you initially started, and you have gone beyond that, so, but once again, I think I got to be physically responsible, and I believe you proposed a 4% on the...
That was our recommendation in the preliminary budget submittal, yes.
But I'm in agreement with the Vice Mayor, okay? So I need a motion.
Motion.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Rodriguez, have you voted?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mojina?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
And I would like also to, I would also want to say, and thank you, I've been a city clerk for four years already, I was appointed acting city clerk in January of 2010, and city clerk in July, and what can I tell you, after three elections, I don't know how many ordinances, resolutions, proclamations, I do love proclamations, certificates, I've learned a lot, and I certainly thank you because also I've learned professionally because I'm three points, I mean credits, away from my certification as a city clerk. Actually, this, now on this October, I have an academy which will serve as the last academy to achieve the CMC, which is the Certified Municipal Clerk Certification, and I certainly, I mean, thank you because you've supported me throughout these years in obtaining this certification, and I'm just telling you that I would like to continue because I'm going to try to also pursue the Master Municipal Clerk Certification, but as of now, I'm happy that I'm going to get this certification as a certified municipal clerk, and I thank you again because you've supported, without your support, I couldn't have done it, and yes, I would like to say that I'm grateful that I worked with you and for you and for the city in the betterment of our community and our city, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item.
Ah, yes, next item, I'm grateful that this item comes after our evaluations because we already took care of this item, we had it on the agenda, actually, and we got confused.
Next is letter P.
Oh, the, oh, yes, yes.
Request for proclamation.
The item P is a request for proclamation to be presented to Luke Erone on his academic achievement, this item is sponsored by Commissioner Suarez.
Commissioner Suarez.
Mayor and Commissioners, Luke is a very smart boy who has a very high achievements in education, and the idea is to recognize all these things his kid is doing because he's going to have a bright future, but like, it happened many times when the young kids, a girl or a boy, they are good students, you have to recognize them, you have to stimulate them to grow in the academic field, and this kid is up A+ in everything, so I ask you to allow to make a proclamation just in academic achievements, something very similar, you know, about this...
Just a question, is he a resident of the city of West Miami?
No, he's not a resident, which is city of West Miami, but to recognize here, we recognize here many...
No, I'm just asking.
We recognize people who, maybe he's not a resident now, maybe will be a resident in two years, you never know, if their parents buy a house here, so recognize the people who is our friend, who is related to us, in this case to me, is a good thing, even if live across 8th Street or living across the corridor way.
No, no, I understand, we just need to... No, no, I understand, we just need to know, I just wanted to know a little more, that's all.
I'll tell you, because it's the condition, the quality of the person, what I try to recognize in this case.
I make a motion.
Taken.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item Q has been addressed already at the request of the city manager, it was in fact included in the agenda, so this item has been taken care of.
Okay.
So, we move to the last item of the agenda, item eleven R, ratification of recommended corrections by the supervisor of elections to charter amendment questions approved by the mayor and city commission on July sixteen, two thousand and fourteen, to be proposed to the electorate on November fourth, two thousand and fourteen, and approved by resolution two thousand and fourteen, thirty-nine, by mayor and city commission.
Well, the last item is this, as you recall, we called for a special commission meeting at some point, because we had to change certain issues, certain items in the charter review language. When we met here, I advised you that we were not changing the meaning, except that we were changing, we were deleting certain words because of word restrictions of seventy-five words in the language of the charter amendment. We have found subsequently that there was another question that was over seventy-five, and a question of punctuation as well. So, we're asking you today to approve non-proton, that a Latin word, from now until then. That means that you approving today what we already did, the city clerk and I, with the division of election, to correct punctuation and to limit a number of words without changing the meaning of the item in the agenda, of the charter review language that is going to go to the election. So, I'm asking you to approve this change, and as I say again, there was no meaningful change, except that it was limiting words.
Okay.
I make a motion.
Okay.
So, like a House Speaker.
Okay, call the vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Okay. Go to the order. Nothing for the go to the order, motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.
Wow.